All these puzzle pieces come together and make this mosaic of what East Lime is. And it's fantastic being in this position and getting to watch it all happen. It really is. It gives you goosebumps sometimes. So whether you're on a historic property, or a commission, or the library. And we do appoint people to these. Generally, they have a very specific interest, these people, and we keep them on. Parks and Rec is a good example. People have been on there for a whole long time. Water and Sewer, we heard the gentleman this evening. But I think there does need to be flushing of the people. On for two terms, off for one, and then you're eligible again for two, or something. So we're getting new ideas, and we're getting new leadership. And we're also not building dynasties, or someone with a little too much power, or say. I think that's always a good thing. And maybe, at this board level, we should consider that on some of the appointments that we make. That after a while, it's okay to ask people to step down for a little bit, or try another commission. And we tend to sometimes, we make a lot of appointments in town. But I have all the confidence in the world, this committee will not take... We will accept resumes from the public, and we will take the best six people that show up and put them on that commission. We have certain rules we have to apply. Minority representation can't be all Republicans, all Democrats, all independents, I don't think are even allowed, or would that be? Independent would be all?
It's just one party.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if that's a party.
Yeah, I have to admit.
Okay. So I think that's cool. And yeah, the lieutenant position and the growth of the department is coming someday. And that would happen even if we were staying resident state trooper. We'd have to build a building, we might have to put more officers on. Because not always did we have 22. Just a couple of years ago, we had high teens. So that's why I say cost neutral. Cost neutral means not the price is going to stay the same forever. 10 years from now, we're going to pay $212,000. It means there's no difference. That the actual cost of the person sitting in that back corner office, and the necessary elements going into that person sitting there, in other words, the lockup, in other words, securing the building, applying a car, that there wouldn't be much difference in that. And that's what I mean by cost neutral. That price isn't going to stay the same. We're all too smart for that. But I'm very inspired tonight by the public's comments. We didn't get a lot of negativity, first of all. That was encouraging, I think, for all sergeants that were here. Put so much time, Mike, you did a great job, Sergeant Maisick. And Sergeant Babcock, who got up and spoke passionately about 30 years of service to our town. I'm very grateful for all your service, and for all the people and organizations that stepped up to let us come to this day, that we can be able to feel confident that we're moving forward and getting closer to making a decision on this. Again, I'm grateful and truly inspired. I think it has been too long a time coming, and the time seems to be getting near to the end. So is my speech. Should we move on?
Well, Sergeant Maisick came, I think, with some additional information tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
I wonder if he has anything that we didn't touch on, that he'd like to clarify?
While he has a brief like this, and we have notes, and we double check everything twice, would you like to add?
Sure, I'll just touch on a couple of questions you guys wanted me to elaborate on. You know, I guess the common theme for tonight was, again, the appointment. During the break outside, I had a discussion with other officers who were in attendance tonight. And Mr. Slanger, like you said, it definitely limits the pool of potential bodies that you could fill that would want to be, that are, say, independent, or whatever. Again, it's a decision you'll have to make to see how you want to go. But again, by limiting that, you're limiting the pool. Same thing goes for the chief. I mean, do you want to actually limit that person to have to live in town? A very valid point. What if they own a half million dollar house in Saybrook, or Legerd, or a couple towns away? That potential candidate, who would be a great fit for here, whose work, say, in our background, would now be ineligible. So I mean, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot either. So just something to keep into in mind.
Could I ask a clarifying question for that? At one time, all police officers were required to live in town. And then that was changed.
Correct.
But isn't there a mileage limit that you have to live within?
There is a mileage limit for officers. It's in our contract, off the top of my head, unless it is 50.
Who knows?
50 was the top of my head, so it's 50 miles.
Within 50 miles?
Yes.
That's too far. For our top person?
Yes.
Mm-mm.
But again, that would be a different contract, a different animal than what the regular officers run with.
Thank you.
You know, one of probably the best things I heard tonight, which has always been, I think, on every single one of these officers' minds, has been the morale issue. That is absolutely something you cannot put a price tag on. Now, I could never sell that to you guys, or sell that to the public, because over the years of coming on in my 15th year here, and trying to go independent, and seeing these different processes and different things, well, you can't sell the morality issue to the public. They're not going to buy that. But that's a major factor in how this department operates, and how your officers operate, and treat the public. Because if they're not being treated fairly, or being disrespected by the entity that's supposed to be managing them, it's no different than me coming into your classroom and telling you what to do, and I've got no idea what I'm talking about. But enforcing my rule and saying, you're either going to live by it, or you can, there's a door. So that's been a hard sell. So that was great, hearing it come from out here tonight. I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of everyone that has worked at that department, and currently works at that department. Some of the soft costs that we discussed are, again, going from exit 74. It's a minimum of 10 miles out of town to get up to Troop B. Excuse me, I didn't bring a water tonight. So you've got, you know, if somebody's down here, you're adding three miles. So there's 26 miles round trip. Now, you're taking a body out of town for an arrest. So there's wear and tear on the tires, there's wear and tear on the vehicle in itself. I did have some numbers from years ago, which obviously are outdated. There's the gas, especially when it was four plus dollars a gallon. Now, I know we pay a little bit different when we buy the town as a surplus, but there's that issue. When we have multiple arrests, whether it's domestic violence, or a large fight, we get called to a Burke's Tavern, or another establishment in town, doesn't matter, it could be a house. We take every officer out of town, and guess what? You know, here's where the troop is supposed to fall in the plane, and come in and watch our area, patrol two guy. Well, guess what? We now have two casinos that are in their area of operation. They are extremely busy, overworked, when you look at their call volume. So we don't have that trooper that is in town anymore. You know, the two radios that are in the vehicle, the two, you know, reporting systems. There's some absolute redundancy in the workload that the officers do have to do. And I think by eliminating one of those, A, the cost to the town is going to be substantial, especially if we don't have to pay for that state radio with the amount of portables that we have between dispatch, RPD, all the vehicles, the boats, all the actual, you know, the portables that go on the, or I meant the base stations, and the portables that are on the officer's belts, aside from also paying for our own fire EMS and police service in town here. It just, to me, it doesn't make any fiscal sense whatsoever. But again, that's part of the program that we're under. The IMC, which is our current reporting system, yes, we would have to do an upgrade. But when we initially purchased that, the Amellos Association paid for that. We pretty much got the Cadillac version, with the assumption that hopefully someday, before some of us retire, we may see an independent force, which would break us away from the state police force. So what that means in retrospect, a cost, is we bought the Cadillac, not the Kia. So it's going to be a very small cost to open up those sections of reporting that we'll need to operate, and then get rid of the next gen system. To where, say, Legerd, I think, had to spend a significant amount more. They are using the IMC system, the same reporting system that our town currently purchased. They just didn't buy the same version. So their initial cost, when they went independent, to open up all those extra modules that are available to that, was a little more significant than what we'd have to pay, because we already have them. Basically, just need to fund the amount to flip the switch on those. Again, and the time out of town is essential. You know, whether it is one guy leaving here, or two guys leaving here, and you're only leaving one other officer in town to fend for himself, especially if, say, another violent occurrence has, happens. domestics, those are usually not pleasant calls to go to, and there are tempers on both sides, especially if there's an intoxicant added to it. So you're now put, you know, where you had two to three responders, you've got one guy there having to fend for himself. So again, that's something you can't put a price on. By being able to, say, again, to take some of these simple arrests, and not have to bring them to the troop, and be able to process them down here at the PD, would alleviate, you know, that time out of town for the guys. The paying in the rears thing, I guess the best way to put that is, 1950, we got a state cop from 50 to 51. Hey, did you like the program? Yep, we did. Here's your $100,000 bill. Whatever it was, $50,000 bill. So now, you just pay for that previous year in that new fiscal year. So that's kind of how that rears works. So yes, we are going to have to absorb that one-time cost to get out of it, but we're already, that will be paying for a service that was already provided to the town. And again, the police commission itself, it's kind of like when we hire officers in town. Backgrounds are a huge thing. They're sensitive material. And God knows, we hear about sensitive material in politicians on TV every day right now. So there is some things that they may not be privy to. Of course, we can eliminate some information that goes to them, which would, you know, be there, but that's just something we have to take into account. So I think that would be the best process. Bring in, find out what their backgrounds are, check their resumes, and see who's going to be the best fit for that process there. As far as the used car, again, I'm torn. I'd love to see a brand-new car. And again, try to make this as fiscally responsible as possible. Going up to just, say, Crest Ford, and looking at a two-year off-lease vehicle that's fairly similar to ours, that has 25,000 miles on it, essentially looks brand spanking new for, you know, upwards of $25,000. To do limited light package, and a town radio in there for that chief, essentially to start this program off, and like Mark said, once you get that into the vehicle acquisition program down the road, we can bring in that new car. And that new car is not going to be one that's on the replacement plan every year, like some of the older patrol vehicles are. You have one male, female, driving it, that essentially is not going to be putting a ton of miles on, so the life expectancy of that car should last, you know, say, five to eight years, instead of the two-year, three-year rotation, that we're, four-year rotation we're dealing with now. So I think that's just something to consider, yes. You know, look at that. But hey, if we can save a few dollars right now, and get a great off-lease vehicle that has very low miles, not a dent or scratch on it, and essentially is brand-new, that's something I think maybe we should look at. And again, the chief living too far out of town, there's a response thing. You know, right now Sergeant McDarmott, again, on that way we're set up, you know, he's far out of town. So if he has to respond, you know, maybe the chief, if we do put, for example, put a limit on there, say, 10 miles or 20 miles, that person could come in for a large event, where they had to, you know, supervise, or be the PIO for a major incident, like we had up on 95 between 74, 75, a few years back.
Well, on the other hand, you are entitled to go 100 miles an hour if you need to, aren't you?
And in other words. So yes, yes.
It's like 10 miles out of town if you were me.
There's a little bit of subjectivity in that, too. I never exceeded more than five miles over the speed limit.
That's not true. I wrote it with you.
Really?
I was scared.
Well, I mean, I wrote down a lot of the questions that some of the citizens had tonight. And again, I think it was basically the same theme, as far as, you know, maintaining the political aspect outwards, as far as your position. Like you stated, you've already got enough going on, it would probably be too much, but at least stay somewhat in the board, so you do know what's going on with your emergency services in town. Just in what capacity you decide to end up serving, that's how it goes. But, you know, does anybody else have anything as far as?
Any questions from the board to clarify any items? You are so thorough. Do you have something?
Not for him.
What I did find, which was brought to my attention from a dispatcher, I grabbed some information last night, is as far as their training goes to get them collect certified, which is the state, the system we use to run backgrounds and get all that stuff, there actually is a statutory reimbursement toward that. Now, it goes off, say, 10 cents per capita, but in the interim, I mean, with the 20, we have, basically, it'd be 20 and a half dispatchers, there's three of them that are collect certified, so we'd be looking at at least a 17, 17 and a half, to get them reimbursed over a three-day period. But there is some money out there that we can get to at least help offset that cost.
And we didn't even talk about the grants tonight.
No. I just wanted to throw that out there as an FYI.
And we can't commit to that, because we don't know if we're going to get the grants or not. But every community out there that has independent police, we see grants that we're ineligible for now.
Correct.
Period. And again, if we listed them, then, you know, when we go to apply for the grants, they might not be there. But they come up all the time on different items. We talked about the fingerprint machine grant yesterday or today, when we met earlier. And there's all sorts of grants out there.
I think we have a couple more comments here, but I'm set. Thank you.
Sergeant Maisick did a remarkable job. I'll just make note to the board of selectmen. So for your confidence reasons, every item that he's talking about, any subject, it's backed up with about 20 pieces of paper, because the background on this is, you know, so you're getting the 10%.
I need a library card to bring.
Yeah, yeah. We've done the work. And he collated the work. I want to give credit to your fellow officers and sergeants that also helped out, and again, all the other organizations, police chiefs in the area, first selectmen, that really helped us with this. They all were more than happy. But Mike, you collated together, and you make a, your presentation, man, it's getting good. You're getting, you know, I remember your first one. Yeah, you're getting really good. Maybe politics someday.
I think Mr. Solano has something in there.
Mr. Solano.
Just a couple of comments, for attorney. To be, no member of Board of Police Commissioners shall hold other elected or appointed office within town. Do other towns exclude people that work for the town in some capacity?
Work? Town employees?
Town employees.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. We got this provision from an ordinance of another town, and we suggested it as part of this ordinance, that the members of the Board of Police Commissioners would have a full plate, and that they would not necessarily need to be any other officer of the town. We didn't try to look into whether or not an employee of the town would or would not be an appropriate member of the Board of Police Commissioners.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if that's a good idea, or a bad idea. I'm just, just strictly.
Would you raise it?
Yeah. The only other question I have, actually, for this commission, it sounds like we have some stuff we're requesting to be written into the language for the next meeting. How does everyone feel? The one question left that I hear is, does the first selectman serve as chairman or not? Ex officio or not?
Well, Mark even said he would. I don't think so. He even said he's sitting in service chair.
And that's what you said in the beginning.
I'd like to, I think the first selectman should serve on the commission, but not as chair. So one of the seven, instead of seven plus an ex officio. That's my feeling.
So six appointed.
Six appointed, plus the first.
Is everyone in agreement with that?
I've, Dan Stewart sits on the Police Commissioner in Waterford. There's several other towns, I did a little bit of research in this, that have an ex officio, but Dan does sit on it. I've talked to a couple of the police commissioners. It is not viewed as a problem at all. In fact, they think it's an asset. He does not chair it, but he's a member, and it has worked according to, you know, people in Waterford, it works very well.
And that doesn't mean that the first selectman's not going to have a close relationship with the chief, right? That will probably go hand-in-hand anyways, right?
And I've talked to- As a department head, I would hope so. I talked to the, I won't use names, but I talked to a couple of chiefs where they do have commissions that don't include the CEO of the town. They're always meeting with the CEO, because it's the nature of the job. That's, the police, they're there every day. When a major incident occurs, the first call, the chief said, is always to the town manager or the first selectman or mayor, not to, you know, they do don't have a commission, but that's not who's going to show up. Because their authority is really not to deal with the day-to-day operations of the town. There is, you know, it's specified here to set up a police commission, or to set up a police department, hire a chief, and policies and so forth. The day-to-day operations is the chief, and he always interacts very closely with the CEO of the town. Thanks for that.
I just have one other thought. Is it possible that the chief of police would end up being paid less than experienced officers with many years with overtime?
Uh-huh, yes.
Rosanna, if you'll check with the state police, pretty much any trooper that works a regular amount of overtime makes more than probably everybody beneath the rank of lieutenant colonel. It's, you know, it just happens. I mean, I didn't work a lot of overtime, and I worked maybe about one shift every couple of weeks, but there will be plenty of instances where a town officer or a town sergeant will be making more than the chief.
Attorney, do you have anything else for us?
Well, I think the board will want me to write up another draft summarizing its comments tonight. And when reviewing it, I did look at one provision, which it might be worthwhile to talk about, it's in paragraph 10. And it says that on the date the police department has established, officers who were appointed by the Board of Selectmen as full-time constables shall become officers of the police department. And I believe there might be one or more part-time constables.
Eight part-time, and we did talk about striking the full-time, quote-unquote, "full-time", and just saying, "constables".
If that's agreeable, I'll amend that.
Yes, thank you. Because he's a fully trained and fully certified police officer.
So I'll amend that in the next draft also.
Thank you.
We have a lengthy meeting coming before us. Any other discussion tonight?
I assume this will be on the next agenda?
Probably the top of it, huh? Yes, it will be. And I'll encourage, if there's anything that the board needs between now and November 2nd, which is our next meeting, if you please contact me, I'd like to get that information to you, and so we might be available with all the information. If anything comes up in discussions from people watching on TV tonight, and bumping into them later, or emails, or discussions at Stop &amp; Shop, or any place that I town, or give credit to all the different grocery stores in town. Our true value. Please, let's have a discussion. You know, let's have a, I want to be able to do that research, and Sergeant Maisick is, probably already has it, and so let's just get it out of that, all those, that library card of information he has, so that we can fully grasp and consume that information. We'll move on in our agenda. The appointment of the Inland Wetlands alternate, Jack Schomiz?
Schomitz.
Schomiz.
I'll move to appoint Jack Schomitz of 265 Roxbury Road, Nyana, Connecticut, to serve as an alternate on the Inland Wetlands Commission through January 8, 2018.
Second?
Then second. Any further comment? His resume is here, and we're appointing someone to a commission.
Where is?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet. That was mailed. It's halfway, after 30 minutes.
Okay, I didn't happen to see it. It's fine. Thank you. I must have skipped that page.
It's kind of buried.
Do you want to take a minute to look it over?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Terrific. Thank you, Jack, for serving. And again, that's how we appoint people to commissions and boards, just like that. Resume came in, and you read it over, and determined he or she was eligible, and would serve us well. 2C, action, proposal for East Lime Highway Department to maintain Ledge Light vehicles. This is, hey, Joe? Grab Joe Braga for you. Ledge Light has had their vehicles serviced by Groton for many years. That kind of has fallen apart. We got reproached by Ledge Light to maintain their vehicles, the light service that required on the vehicles, anything heavy would go to places. But, you know, the oil changes, and the light bulb changes, et cetera. And in talking to our highway department, our very capable Chuck Holyfield, and our Public Works Director, who's here this evening, after working a long day, he's still here, Joe Braga, they feel they would be able to feather in these vehicles, as it wouldn't be a dramatic cost, or a dramatic increase in workmen hours, and we would be getting a significant rate for this that would cover any costs. Would you like to add to that, or be available for questions as well, please?
Yeah, just a quick point, is the money that we're looking to, talking about tonight, is the labor cost, because the town already pays those employees and mechanics, so what the cost of, that we would build out that labor, we're looking to put in a CNRE account to purchase things for that shop, that will make it more efficient to maintain the rest of our fleet. Example, there was one in here, we used to have the tire shop in the northern of town come in and always replace our tires, and there was a cost to that. We bought a machine to do that, so now we can save money every time when we have a huge fleet of vehicles, so we save. So we're looking to buy things for the fleet that we would normally take out of the fleet maintenance highway line, which is going to hopefully help take pressure off that line, because if you notice in the past, that's one of the few lines of highway that's always over, because our fleet is so big. And, you know, you're here tonight with the police, and we might get extra vehicles. You know, we're trying to, you know, get our hands around, around this whole fleet. So that's what we're trying to do here. It's an opportunity to earn some money. I mean, one of the things I think we're trying to do is find revenue for the town, and not that there's a lot of it, but this is an opportunity that our guys can do the work, get some revenue to town to pay for things, to make us more efficient.
Wonderful.
Joe, how many vehicles and what kind of vehicles does Ledge Light have?
Seven, and they're sedans, like tourist-type vehicles. There's no trucks.
They have a couple vans, that's, I think.
Yeah, there might be, they told us seven sedans, there might be a van or two, but not, no trucks.
No heavy vehicles? It's just passenger vehicles?
Yeah, passenger vehicles going from here to there.
Thank you.
Question from Ed. My son is a full-time employee at Ledge Light. Do you see any conflict with me voting on this?
No, I don't see any.
Okay, thank you. Just want to be sure.
Full disclosure.
No. No. Nor will you. Nor will I. So I just want to be sure, okay? For disclosure.
Question, just a question for you. So at what point do we become a private shop? I mean, why would they come to us as opposed to just go to the market, to have the maintained vehicles?
Well, because the town of Groton's been servicing their vehicles, so they've been going to them. I'm not exactly sure what the reason for why Groton's not doing it right now, but they find a great service that we're providing in there. They're an agency of our town, and they provide health services for the town, so that's why we were interested in doing it.
What, your point, Mark, is why us as opposed to Jiffy Lube?
Well, at some, yeah, yes.
Well, I mean, that's a fair point.
I mean, it is, we have a very competent shop down there.
Correct.
Joe's brought me in, and it's pretty amazing. But at what point, I mean, I have a little issue with it, because it just seems like, there's a private sector that can handle this. Why are we taking on the liability? We break something there of their vehicle. I don't see much to gain from us, for us. That's all.
What are the pros, Joe? Why would we do this, other than to be good neighbors to an agency that we're being served by?
It brings some additional revenue, and shows that that department could be a cost center, because they're getting revenue. I mean, ultimately, what I'd like to look at is, we have the water department, the sewer department, the Board of Ed, the P.D., our fleet maintenance does everyone's stuff, and everyone just sees the bottom line of what we do. And this is the start of showing a cost center of what the value they do to the different departments. That's the way I look at it, is showing what those guys are doing, and what kind of work that they're doing.
So, but aren't we just billing it out at cost? So, but aren't we just billing it out at cost? I mean, it's money.
No, it's $50 an hour. Well, it's $50 an hour, we'd be billing them out straight time. But those employees are already getting paid and already doing their job. So it's revenue to their town.
So we're upping, we're billing at a higher rate than we.
Correct.
Are incurring.
Those, those, those mechanics typically are in the mid-20s, but we're billing out at 50. Plus, plus an administrative fee. I mean, we don't have to do this. It's an opportunity to bring some additional revenue in to help buy equipment to this, to make us even more efficient to be able to do the stuff. So that's what, I mean, I don't think it's, it's not a big fleet. If we don't do that, that's fine. But it's an opportunity. I, I hear we're trying to find different revenues and try to find ways to be creative to bring money into this town.
And I suppose.
This was one that was brought to us, and we.
It's not our job to tell Ledge Light that if they just went to Jiffy Lube, they could probably get it cheaper anyway.
That's their right.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
It's more than just oil change.
I know, I'm teasing.
So it's, it's, it's a continuity and a consistency of the same service group. And it is a quasi-government agency. It's not Niantic Plumbing's vehicles, okay? And, and, or any other plumbing's vehicles. I'm trying to cover everybody tonight. It is quasi-government. We had a health department here with vehicles at one point. So it's, it's, it's a way, this money would be coming into the town, and these folks are already being paid, as you mentioned. So this $50 is, is revenue. It's increased revenue to the town.
Revenue to the town to make us more efficient so that we can.
Correct. Any other comments?
I just have a question. So is it your opinion that we have the excess capacity to handle these vehicles without stressing our system?
Yes, we can, we can, we can manage doing this, this work.
We've been in.
Has town council reviewed this agreement?
Yes, I can, I can say that you can authorize the first selectman to sign.
I'll move to authorize the first selectman to sign the attached amended agreement with Ledge Light Health District. And I move to establish a capital non-recurring revenue and expense CNRE account for highway department fleet maintenance equipment for the revenues received from Ledge Light Health District for maintenance to their fleet.
One second.
Any comments? Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstained? Okay. Thanks for your work tonight. Go home, get some sleep, and, and don't be late tomorrow. Our next item is a special appropriation transfer of 200, $2,250 from the contingency for the purchase of tax collection finance accounting bridge. This is just software that would really help us. And it's been identified that we'd be able to really transfer reports from this office and get them over to that office. And that's the simplified version. Anna, you're going to get into a little bit more detail, and I'm sure answer a question, but you're going to do it at the microphone and on the camera. Anna Johnson is our Director of Finance.
Yes, so the software provider for the tax department had approached me about purchasing the bridge to bridge the tax, the cash receipts batches that the tax office does over to the accounting finance side. And it was my plan to put it in the next year's budget. However, if we wanted, would purchase it now, they're willing to allow us to pay for half of it now and the other half of it next fiscal year. And so, you know, I just thought I would bring it before the board. I, I asked them how many batches were processed last fiscal year, and 896 batches were processed in the tax office. And then, you know, again, we had to enter them all on the accounting side. Of those 896 batches, approximately 200 of them were in the month of July alone. And then the other big month is January. There were about 134, and then the remaining are spread out over the other year. In addition to the cash receipts batches, there are also refund batches. The refund batches are the consent calendars that you approve at your meetings. And what oftentimes happens with the refund batches is the tax department doesn't bring them to us. So when we go and do our monthly reconciliations, we have to go to them to get the paperwork, which, you know, it's, it's all time-consuming. And then the other batches that they also process are, if someone pays their taxes online, for example, sometimes they pay the current taxes and they owe prior year taxes. So when, when the tax department gets to the point where they reconcile their records and notice that, then they adjust those payments, and they oftentimes don't give us those batches either. So they're, you know, you know, things that if the batches are automatically populated, then we're going to see them in the system, and we can get the information from them quicker and be, be more efficient.
So this, in effect, automatically transfers those batches into your system?
Correct. So we're going, it's going to populate, we're still going to need to review it and then go in and post it. But it's going to save the staff member from having to key them all in.
So you've been manually entering them in?
Correct. And, and, you know, when you manually enter batches, sometimes you select the incorrect account number. So, you know, so it's just going to be more, more efficient.
And this is a, a, just 50% now, 50% later with no additional finance charge? It's just splitting it into payments?
Correct. And, and the benefit of, of actually moving forward at this point in time with the installation is it'll be up and running on July 1st, which is, you know, the busiest month. If we wait until next fiscal year, we won't get it installed until after the busy month.
And is there a learning curve with this, or is it just a fairly clean, it just, it does it in the background?
Well, it's, it's all, you know, we're going to work with our accounting software vendor, and they're going to map all of the accounts to talk to each other properly.
Is there an additional cost for that, or is that included in the installation?
That's all included in the, in the installation.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
What is the, with this deduction, what is the balance left in the contingency fund?
There's a, we, we have about $217,000 in the contingency account.
Okay, thank you.
It's still early in the year. We've, I, we've yet to tap it.
The only thing. $1,390 for the Flanders Fire SCBA gear.
I'll move to approve a special appropriation and transfer of $2,250 from account 010112030500 contingency to account 010111820215 maintenance office equipment for the purchase and installation of the bridge from the tax system to the accounting software system for improved efficiency and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? I just have it.
May I suggest that we dispense with the ex officios this evening?
I bet I have so many.
Are we doing the executive session?
Yeah, we do have the executive session. We can dispense with the ex officios if you don't mind. I have a few items I got to put out, and I'll make them as brief as possible and not give you the whole litany of all the activity I've been up to. But I'd like to thank Castello's for dropping off the pizza tonight. That was actually a nice touch. We meet every Wednesday. But here's why they also did it. We're going to have a tip-a-cop event at Castello's on November 16th. The money's going to go to Care and Share. It'll be a week before Thanksgiving, so we're going to be in that holiday spirit. And we just had a little discussion and put this all together in the, in the hallway, five minutes before 7:00. That's why it was a little harried coming in. Tip-a-cop, so we're going to have the cops, maybe five, six cops serving food that night because it's not a bar scene, it's a restaurant scene. And you'll tip them, and all the tips will go to Care and Share. And that'll be November 16th. I think that's a Board of Selectmen evening, so we can either all go down there and, and have a little din-din. Or I'll see you and wave to you across the table, across the room. But that'll be November 16th at Castello's Tip-a-Cop. And I appreciate Castello's for stepping up with that idea and for our police officers for saying, you know what, that is an awesome idea. Chris Heron was last night and also at the high school, an amazing, amazing speaker, is an NBA star and a basketball star at his high school at Fall River. And he had a tragic story of drug addiction that he was, I, he made a difference in people's lives, and he planted seeds and created some thought-provoking moments for the students in the afternoon. And then chills and goosebumps in the evening to the families and students that came out for that. I thank the youth coalition that put that together, you know, that's, it's one of those under-the-radar commissions like we talked about here tonight. They put on the Harlem Wizards, you know, Niantic Rotary and the Dago Foundation. A lot of people donated money for this because it's an expensive speaker to bring in. But I think, I just applaud our town. We, we, we don't just fill our students with the three Rs. We also try to fill their souls a little bit and send them in the right direction. Victoria, you were there, right? Did you like it?
It was great.
Wasn't it great?
Yeah.
Great, great speaker. Twist Yarn Shop, welcome to our community. We cut a ribbon over there. They're on, we call that Flanders Road, right? And I wish them continued success. The last farmer's market happened last week. Jared Priest, one of our officers of our police department, received the Officer of the Year at the elk ceremony a week or two ago. Lastly, we have a new town assessor who will start on Monday. Her name is Diane Vitaglione. She comes from, have we determined, I'm sorry, I don't have her resume in front of me, it's late. Was it Madison where she works now as an assistant assessor? And went through a grueling interview process, and she's a fantastic, going to be a fantastic assessor. We're sorry to see Donna Beckett retire. She served us very well, and it was an honor to serve with her. Any further comment?
Just have one comment. I would like to see, I don't think we could wait on this $10,000 for the police station upgrades, safety upgrades. And I would like to see a special appropriation, independent of this, if possible, to get that fixed as soon as possible.
Yeah, that might be a contingency item that we'll pull from. I get away, let's, I agree with you. That, that $10,000 part, we're working on already, and maybe we'll have that, Anna, for the next meeting. It's coming up with, where we're going to come up with the $10,000, either through contingency or if there's, would that maybe be considered LOSAP money? Yeah, which is a state CIP, and we get funded there. Although, didn't, yeah, I'll work on that. And I'll put it on our agenda for next meeting. I agree with you, Mark, and that's, that's a good, that's a good point. Kick it, kick it into gear. If not, we can adjourn to.
Public comment?
Yeah, a public comment. Anybody for the public? Okay, you'll stay silent tonight. So now we can adjourn to an executive session. We'll include Attorney O'Connell. Anna, you don't want to come to this, right? Nah, you can go home.
I'll move to, we move into executive session for, to conduct a real estate.
Discussion.
Discussion to include the town attorney. Second.
Okay. Thank you all.